I think I know everybody. I think the only person I don't know is Jennifer and Angie.
Jennifer Carmen, our Development Services Director.
Hi Jennifer.
Jimmy Forbes, City Administrative Gilroy, and then Angie Gonzalez, since she works in the clerk's office.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
It is 5:30 right now. Good evening. We're going to wait just a couple more minutes to get started.
Hello.
Hi Brian, welcome.
Hi. I'm sorry I'm late. Thank you for having me.
No worries. Thank you for being here. We're gonna get, go ahead and get started now. So, welcome everyone to this joint community town hall, joined because we're joined with Santa Clara County. Specifically, we have Brian Darrow, and then we also have the city of Gilroy that's joining us, Jimmy Forbes. And so I'm going to make a couple just general remarks, and I'll turn it over to Jimmy to say hello to everybody. And so I just wanted to welcome everyone here tonight. We're in a intense time, but an exciting time and a hopeful time as well. Today I received the call that my father got his vaccination, and that's just such a sign of hope for me of where we're at. And so we're going to hear from the county about how, how things are going, where we're at with vaccinations, with testing. We're back to the purple now. So we're, you know, we're away from the order that, you know, didn't allow outdoor dining, didn't allow personal services. Those are now allowed, but I think we're probably going to hear from Brian what the county message is, is we have everything that's open now, but the advice and the recommendation is to still stay home when you can, to still socially distance, to still wear our masks. I wanted to make one other plug before I turn it over to Jimmy for a moment, and that is, the city of Morgan Hill is having their goal-setting session, starts tomorrow. It's a workshop open to the community at 1 o'clock, and then we start up again on Saturday morning at 9. Would love to have everyone there. The council review, will be reviewing its strategic priorities and just talking about a variety of topics. And with that, I am excited to announce Jimmy Forbes, who is the city administrator for the city of Gilroy. And Jimmy, you're muted.
I'm always muted. Thank you Christina, and good evening, and thank you to everyone, and especially thank you to our friends in Morgan Hill for organizing this. I think Christina hit the nail on the head. We, we do feel some cautious optimism. We do know that people are getting vaccinated, and so we encourage everyone to do so, but still be diligent and, you know, practicing social distancing and wearing masks. So please stay within the purple, follow the rules, and please help everybody out, including your neighbors. So, thank you again for coming tonight, and with that, I guess it's, we'll go to Brian. Is that what you want to do Christina?
Certainly, yes. Thank you.
Great. No, thank you for having me. I'm going to try to share my screen here. Not the greatest wizard of technology. Let's see, share. Does that show up for everybody?
Yes.
Good, good. Well, great. I might, yeah, I, so I wanted to provide a little bit of background. I'm Brian Darrow with the county executive's office. Thank you so much for inviting me today. I've been serving in the county's EOC for the, for the last 11 months, working on COVID response efforts that entire time. And so it's good to be back with you. I joined one of these forums a couple of months ago. I think it's hard to tell in COVID time, but it was a productive session, and it's, it's great to be invited back, and a lot certainly has changed since then. So I was asked to provide an update on the local epidemic, as Christina was mentioning, and testing and our case counts, and some of the information about, which I think folks know by now, about health orders changing, the state's changes that they made, and then also the vaccine, which of course is a quickly evolving operation itself. So the first slide I just wanted to share here is our, our normal slide of the local epidemic. It's been almost exactly one year since the day of our first case that was reported in Santa Clara County, and it's, so it's been quite a long and difficult road, as reflected pretty well in this chart here. This chart shows case data back from the beginning, and you can see on the far right, our cases have, they've started to come back down a little bit, which is certainly good news, but they're coming back down, and, and they're remaining at the moment at a very high level. So the spike that we saw over the holidays is still impacting us, but fortunately, we're not on the upward swing of that. But it is important to, to know that, you know, when you compare it to our earlier surges, our July bump that we had there, and, and the very beginning of the pandemic in March, it really dwarfs what we saw back then, even as we've come down a little bit. Yeah, the next slide. So this slide is case rates by county section. So we wanted to share some information about South County, specific to South County, and so this, this slide shows case rates, and you can see that our highest case rates have been and still are in Gilroy, followed by East San Jose, and then the non-Gilroy part of South County. So Morgan Hill and San Martino are included in that yellow section there, and then the rest of Santa Clara County is, is below that. So certainly, South County is one of, has been throughout the pandemic, really one of our harder-hit areas. Although, you'll notice that, again, the trends everywhere are starting to come down a little bit. So, so positive signs in that regard, but still high. This slide shows our, the number of folks who have sadly passed away with COVID over the course of the pandemic, and you'll notice that towards the right-hand side of that slide, that we've really seen quite a big spike after November, really. And so what we know about death data is that the trends there really tend to follow after the big spike in cases, three to four weeks after is, is kind of typical. So what we, what we see there where it's, you know, we never really had any individual week of, throughout the entire pandemic of more than 26 deaths. But through November, we have had five consecutive weeks now of more than 100 deaths, and reaching up to 100 in the 130s for a couple of weeks. And unfortunately, we think those trends, in the short term at least, will continue. The, the recent couple of weeks of case counts starting to come down are probably not going to be reflected right away because of that delay that I mentioned. This slide actually looks at hospitalizations and admissions in the, in the ICU and fatality rates based on age. And we, I wanted to include this. This was, several of these slides were included in our board presentation the other day, but this slide is kind of relevant for the way that the state is approaching their eligibility around vaccine, because you can tell that for folks who are of an older age, there is a real disparity in terms of how likely you are to be hospitalized, to be admitted to the ICU, or to pass away. And so, you know, when the state had decided to start with an older population and providing the vaccine, it was largely because of these trends. And so you see for 75-year-olds, I have a couple of points I wanted to make here. A third of cases of folks who are 75 and older end up being hospitalized. While for those who are 65 to 74 in the, in the gray there, it's almost a quarter. And, or about, yeah, yeah, just, just under a quarter. And then for those who are less than 65, it's only about 5%, and end up hospitalized. And so one in six cases over 75 have passed away from COVID, while those 65 to 74, it's, it's about a 1 in 25 rate, and for everybody else, under 65, it's about 1 in 300. So, pretty significant difference. Here is a slide that you probably all have heard so much, much about, and that is the significant changes that came from the state. This past week, on Monday, the state announced quite, it was actually, we didn't get a lot of warning about this. We, we were, it was a little bit news to us, too. The state did some analysis on projections of ICU capacity going forward, and they determined that it was time to lift the regional stay-at-home order for the entire state. It applies to all regions in California. So even Southern California and the Central Valley, which actually have more, even more of a hospitalization challenge than our Bay Area and our county does, but the state determined that it was time to lift the, those orders. They also lifted, which is a little bit less covered in the press, the limited stay-at-home order, which was, you know, it was called a curfew by some, but that was the order that actually came in right before the regional stay-at-home order, it applied to activities between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, and said that you could only have essential activities. And that really, after this, the regional stay-at-home order came in, only affected, for the most part, affected retail, non-essential retail, which was allowed to stay open at about 20% capacity. So those have both been lifted. And so as was mentioned earlier, the county has returned to the purple tier, which means that outdoor dining, personal care services, both indoors and outdoors, card rooms, outdoors, family entertainment centers outdoors, and museums, zoos and aquariums outdoors that may reopen. So those are the, those are some of the main changes. Those, it took effect immediately. There's a few other smaller things as well, and there's a few local things that stayed in place, like our county directive related to travel. The travel directive, which has a mandatory quarantine after, if you have traveled for more than 150 miles from the county border, does remain in place. That predated the regional stay-at-home order, and that, and that is still in place. The, I think, you know, Christina was sort of alluding to this, and so was Jimmy. The, all of this, all of these changes don't, should not be taken as a signal that it's time to be less vigilant. If anything, I think it's, it's almost only ever more important to remain vigilant, as activities are, some activities are allowed to resume. As we mentioned previously, the, you know, the trends have started to show these early signs of positivity. Well, maybe a bad choice, we're headed in a good direction, but we are far from out of the woods. And so we definitely encourage everyone in the community to continue practicing what is still our very best tool, even though vaccines are here, and that is, that is so, so hopeful. It's going to take a while to roll out. And so our best immediate tool that everyone can utilize is social distancing, wearing your mask, just being really careful and vigilant in, in all of our activities. So we do want to impress upon everyone that that important, important message remains the same. I did want to share a little bit about COVID hospitalizations, because in a way, you know, hospitalizations are really probably a more important indicator than cases. They fall a little bit after cases, not, and then deaths fall after that. But our hospitalizations have shown a positive, a helpful trend as well. So that it, we've come down from a peak in our non-ICU hospitalizations from, we were up at 559 COVID non-ICU patients at our highest point. Now we're down to 392. That's good. But still, you know, five times, I think, as high as our October levels. And then you'll see there that the ICU numbers haven't come down quite as much. So they, they're coming down a little, but ICU, we've noticed, those don't, those are cases that take a little bit longer to come down. And so, still, these are still very concerning numbers, but they're headed at least in, in the right direction. I wanted to move on to testing. This, this slide shows our overall testing levels. I'll be quick about this. It's all providers in the entire county. The numbers are very good. We're, we're testing, as you can see, it's sometimes up to 25,000 tests a day, which is such a far cry from where we were early in the pandemic, testing, you know, a few hundred folks or less than 1,000 folks a day at times. And we really appreciate the partnership with Morgan Hill and Gilroy on citing a number of sites in partnership with the county to try to make testing accessible. These, we get extra credit with our tier system with the state around, when we do a lot of testing. So it's actually beneficial both for understanding what's happening in the pandemic, and also for trying to help us get, get to a better tier under the state's system. We do remain pretty far away from getting back to the red tier, just for context. You know, the purple tier threshold is seven cases, daily cases per 100,000 residents. Even with our, the extra credit we get from this really high level of testing we are able to do, we're still at 23 cases per 100,000 residents. So still quite a, quite a bit above. The next slide I wanted to show, shows testing rate by geographic region in the county. And the orange is South County, the green is East San Jose, and then purple is the rest of the county. For, for a while, the, the non-South County or East Side, the less impacted parts of the community, we're actually getting tested a little bit more than our more impacted parts, but that's flipped. So, and it's, this is actually what you want. You want the parts of the community that are more heavily impacted to have access to testing. So these trends have been better in recent months. This is the positivity rate among county residents. So same colors for East San Jose, rest of the county, and South County. You can see, South County, I actually have slightly different numbers. I have numbers that are broken out by the city. And so I have Gilroy numbers, and if you look at, then they're slightly more recent than this map, but the positivity rate actually in Gilroy is about 13% right now, and then East San Jose is just behind them at about 12%. And Morgan Hill is a little under 8%, and the rest of the county is right about where you see with that purple in the 5% range. So it gives you a sense of the disparity, gives you a sense of where the, the epidemic is hitting our communities hardest. And again, it is, it is South County and East San Jose. I did want to share some of the testing sites that are available in South County. So there's several county-operated sites. The first one there is, is no appointment. It's five days a week. It's been in place for a really long time. We can test up to 800 people a day there at the South County Annex. The Morgan Hill City Council chambers, we have a couple of different times a month. We can test up to 750 folks a day. That is by appointment. Then we've come to San Ysidro Park in Gilroy, basically every other Wednesday, another drop-in testing opportunity. And now we really have invested a lot more of our state testing resources in South County. And again, in partnership with the city of Gilroy and with the city of Morgan Hill to find sites. We so appreciate that. The city of Gilroy provided the Gilroy Civic Center, which is a five-day-a-week, including the weekend's testing site. These are all appointment-based, all five of those, or four of those bullets there. And you can see at the bottom of the page, and we'll share these slides, where you can call or you can visit online to book an appointment. And that, we are, we have a new testing bus that we've been sending to, that we will be sending to Costco in Gilroy. The next date of that is actually this Sunday. So I wanted to spend some time on vaccines, and maybe I'll just ask how much time I have. Do you, do you want me to go pretty quickly so we can have a lot of time for questions? Or would you like me to spend 10 minutes or something?
Yeah, I think another 10 minutes would, would be great.
Okay. Great. So, so vaccines. So the COVID vaccines are now here, which is such welcome news, something we've been waiting many, many months for. There are two different kinds of vaccines that have been authorized by the FDA, approved in the United States, and that is the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine. They both require two doses separated by three or four weeks. Pfizer's three weeks, Moderna is four weeks. And there are, yeah, we put together just a quick comparison. Both of these were tested through clinical trials that involved tens of thousands of participants. The Pfizer trial had 43,000 people participate. The Moderna trial had 30,000 people participate from a really broad cross-section, section of ages, ethnicities, and both of those were proven quite effective, really across every group that was in the trial now. So it was 95% effective in the Pfizer trial and 94.1% effective in the Moderna trial. What they were effective at is preventing symptomatic COVID, really sort of preventing more severe COVID-19. So what we don't know as well from the trials is whether these vaccines actually prevent transmission. Could you be a carrier of COVID? What, even after you've had the vaccine, is a question we don't quite know the answer to. But what we do know the answer to is, it's, if you get the vaccine, a couple, basically a couple of weeks after your second dose, one to two weeks after your second dose, the likelihood of you getting a severe or even just a symptomatic case of COVID-19 is dramatically reduced. 95% effectiveness is very good for a vaccine. So these are, these, these are very well performing. And the one group that I think it's important to highlight, we're not included in the clinical trials. One, one very important group is children. So the Pfizer vaccine was tested on, and the folks who are 16 and older, and Moderna was tested with 18 and older. So the vaccines have been approved for just those populations. So for Pfizer, if you're 15 or younger, you, no one would get that vaccine, and Moderna, if you're 17 or younger. So we have a population that's left out, but there are clinical trials underway to expand, looking at 12 to 17-year-olds. Fortunately, a kid with youth, COVID has had less of a harmful impact, substantially less of a harmful impact, but it is a population that's currently left out of the vaccine opportunity. Was there anything else? So, one question we get is, will we, will you have side effects from the vaccine? And you, and there are side effects, which is not, not atypical for vaccines. You can have mild or moderate side effects from, in the location where the, the shot goes in. So in your arm, you get some redness or soreness. Mild headache is not uncommon. Some people can get mild fever or chills. Actually, and we've seen that especially after the second dose. That seems to have, to be more common, but the side effects usually last only a couple of days. Really, severe side effects are very rare. There is some, you know, stories and, of folks having an anaphylactic reaction. And so that is a, a thing that is monitored for at all of the vaccination sites. You're supposed to stay for 15 to 30 minutes to make sure you're monitored. And there's, there's medical staff on hand at all of these sites to make sure that they're ready to spring into action if needed. But those are very, very rare occurrences. So the next question usually is, who is eligible right now for the vaccine? And this has not been, we wish this was clearer all the time for the community. But, but, I mean, it is clear right now. What's, what's harder to predict is the future, who's in the next phase. But what we do know is who's currently eligible, and that is Phase 1, Phase 1A, which has, is healthcare personnel mostly, but also residents of long-term care facilities. Those folks have been eligible for quite a while now. More recently, the state allowed...
I think we lost Brian. Jimmy, can you hear Brian? No.
No, he froze Christina.
Okay, let me send him a quick message. Bear with us, everyone. Sorry about that. See if we can get him back in. Well, while we're waiting for Brian to jump back in, we're going to have the opportunity to do questions and answers. And so, a couple of different things that you can do. So there is a Q and A, so you can go in and type out a question that you might have. You can also raise your virtual hand, and the other way to do it is if you're on the, calling in from the phone, you can go ahead and do star nine, and that will automatically raise your hand, and so we know that you'll want to ask a question. And then we prefer if you would do the questions in the Q and A versus the chat. We have a couple of questions coming in. Well, while we're waiting another moment, Michelle, are you able to hear me?
Looks like Michelle may have signed off already. Can I help?
Yeah, maybe Maureen, if you want to pull up the county's dashboard, so we can kind of showcase what's on the dashboard right now.
And he's back.
Excellent.
All right, I'm so sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Brian. We didn't have any silly jokes to tell, so we were just kind of anxiously hoping that you'd be back.
I'm going to take off the video, because I don't know, I don't know why the internet connection's not working well, but maybe that'll help.
Got it. Thank you.
So it's just, where did I lose you? Here? Were we talking about, I was talking about the eligibility?
Yes.
Is that, okay. So, yeah, currently, this is the, and can you see my slide?
Yes.
So I'll just go quick. Yeah, the, so this is the population that's currently eligible. The state, the state has indicated that coming next are education sector, food and agriculture workers, and emergency service workers. But they also made an announcement this week that they may be moving to an aid, more of a fully age-based approach, probably after that population I just mentioned. And so it's, it's been a really, an exercise in uncertainty, because the state has changed a number of approaches. And so we don't actually know where they're going to land. But we will, but right now, it's, what is clear is these populations are eligible now in our, in our county. The county health system just recently, just a day ago, went to this, went to 65 and older. So it's a, it's a provider-by-provisor decision about whether they have the capacity and vaccine in, or supply in order to move further along the tier system. So, but you can see there that Kaiser and Palatum Medical Foundation, at least as of a few hours ago when I checked, were still in the 75 and older, and then Stanford, El Camino, and our county system are in 65 and older, as well as, of course, healthcare workers. I wanted to share our broad kind of numbers and our, and our ambitious county vaccination goal. So you see the total population there, but if, again, if you look at who is actually eligible for these vaccines, the 16 and older population, it's about 1.5 million residents. So if we were, there's been a lot of talk about herd immunity, and what is the number to which we need to get to really be, have community-wide protection, or pretty good community-wide protection? And there's no magic number, but 85% is a number that Dr. Fauci has mentioned that our health officers have thought is a pretty good ballpark. And so 85% of that 16 and older population getting two doses, it really puts us in a place where if we were trying to get to that level by August 1st, we would need to be vaccinating about 100,000 doses per week, a little, a little less than that, but get, but near that number. And so, so far, we have, I want to give you the first dose numbers at least, which are, we've, we've had 183,000, nearly 184,000. nearly 184,000 first doses administered. And that's a good number to look at because that's individual residents. Not, now, not, not all of these are actually county residents is important to flag because in, especially in the first part of the rollout, healthcare workers who work in Santa Clara County were eligible. But in the, in this later part, especially with the older adults, it's been much more focused on county residents. So it's a little bit smaller number than that, but it gives you an idea of how we're starting to inch forward towards getting our population vaccinated. The county health system's vaccinated about half of those individuals. But our vaccine supply is really the most concerning part. That is our limiting factor. I mentioned the 100,000 doses per week we need to be administering in order to get to that August 1st goal. We're only getting about 40,000 doses a week. And so, you know, and 100,000 is first and second doses. And that's what we're getting in terms of first and second doses. So we're not there in terms of the supply and we really hope that that supply will increase. There's a lot of wild cards out there. We don't know if there will be a third vaccine. Johnson and Johnson is supposed to go before the FDA soon, I think, and maybe early February. So we would hope that we might have yet another option. And there's others that are being studied and actually some that are, have been approved in other countries. So there may be not only more vaccine coming from Moderna and Pfizer, but hopefully additional different vaccines. There are many key challenges to achieving the goal, the one I, the biggest one I already highlighted, which is vaccine supply. Another one is really the changing state and federal guidance. There was a big announcement, I think it was yesterday or maybe the day before, that is a bit of cause for concern, I would say, which is that the state is saying now that they, that they're going to rethink the allocation process. They're hiring, they're hiring a third-party administrator, it looks like it's Blue Shield, who will be helping allocate, making decisions about where the vaccine should be allocated. And so we're not clear on what that will mean. And it's, so it's sort of taking away some local control there. And so it's yet to be determined what that will mean, but clearly the state wants to be more involved in the allocation process. And then the, the state guidance around who's eligible again, has just been a challenge for trying to communicate to the community who's coming next, that even the definitions around food and agriculture workers and education and childcare workers are not entirely clear. A lot of it is, we have a good sense on a lot of it, but there, there's some things we need, you know, some further clarifications we really need, need to get. The, I highlighted here another challenge, which is that the allocation system, as it currently stands, before the state's doing this third-party administrator is very complex because there's a program with the federal government where they're providing vaccine to CVS and Walgreens in order to vaccinate long-term care residents. There's a direct allocations that happen to certain federal agencies or federal affiliated agencies, like the VA gets its own vaccine, Indian Health Services gets its own vaccine, and then multi-county entities like Kaiser and Pamp, get the, or Sutter, get their vaccine directly from the state. They don't get it from the county right now, so we don't actually see that as well. Although they have, we've asked them to share information with us and they have been, which is why we have, I'll show you our dashboard in a second here. And then, so our, you know, one of our big challenges is how do we ensure equity to the highest risk and highest impacted communities? Because I was sharing the issue that is, that we're, we all, you know, are seeing faced in East San Jose and in your communities. And it's a lot, you know, these are communities with a lot of essential workers and where the pandemic has hit people the hardest. And you want to make sure with the vaccine rollout that we're reaching those communities, which also may be harder, harder to reach due to a variety of factors. But that is a big, big goal. And I think it only becomes more challenging when the allocation is going to be done by Blue Shield and a statewide approach. But, you know, don't want to be too dour on that. We haven't seen what it means yet, so we'll have to wait, wait and see as that rolls out in the next few weeks. And then it's just so hard to communicate clearly with the, with things changing. But we, we're trying to do that now. And so it'd be, I'd like to get to questions soon so we can try to provide that information that you want. But I have just a couple more slides. This is our dashboard, you can find it on our website. It lays out how much, how many doses have been allocated to our community and then how many have been administered. You'll see we've, and actually I'm realizing I pulled the wrong, the wrong number earlier. So we are actually at 140,000 first doses, but if you add the second doses, we're at about 100, close to 176,000 doses there. So I was a little bit off, actually. I had, I had pulled the allocation number, but you can see out of the 183 first doses we've been allocated, 140,000 have already been administered. And we have of second doses, we have 83,000 we've been given and 35,000 of those have been administered. But then there's 56,000 appointments that have already been booked. So we are not sitting on vaccine. I know there's a bit of a narrative early on in the pandemic, or early on in the vaccine rollout, though, these are not getting into people's arms fast enough. That's really not happening in our community. Things have been laid out in, in a way that now we have the systems in place to get vaccine into arms. It's just a question of actually supply. A few frequently asked questions I wanted to share really quick. So we get asked how effective are the vaccines? Very effective, we already covered that, I think. The question we get is do I need to be vaccinated if I've already had COVID? And the answer is yes, because we don't know how long the protection from having COVID will last. Actually, there's some evidence that the vaccine might provide longer protection than actually having had COVID. But a lot of these are unknown because neither COVID or the COVID vaccine have been with us all that long. So we can't, it's hard to know how the duration of, of protection from, from either of those things until we've had more life experience with these, with the virus and with the vaccine. We do get asked how patients will be notified that it's time to book their second appointment among those who've gotten a first appointment and/or who just want to stay on top of things. And that's really something you check with your health provider. Many, many, our county is doing this, we, we book second appointments at the first appointment. We didn't start that at the very beginning, but we're doing that now and that's a generally good practice. Can I still get COVID after being vaccinated? Yes, you can, because the vaccine isn't perfect. No vaccine is perfect, but it is, you know, pretty, pretty effective again at preventing severe infection. But it also takes time to take effect. So we, what the evidence shows is that it's 95 and 94.1% effective a couple of weeks after the second dose. If you only get one dose, there's some, some evidence that it's about 50% effective. But there's also, you know, there's any time along that channel when you, when you might become exposed and could get it. But, or, you know, and there is a few, few percent of chance that you, you could still get it based on what the trial showed. But the, the big factor too is that we don't know yet, the, again, if transmission is actually prevented. So we know you're not, you're much less likely to get sick, but you may actually be a carrier of the virus. Couple more things, do I still need to practice social distancing where I face covering? Even if I've gotten the vaccine, yes, that's very important for, actually for a lot of the reasons I've already said. Because again, we don't know for sure if you will, if it prevents you from being a carrier, if it permit, prevents transmission. So in order to protect others, even if you've gotten the vaccine, it's important to continue those active, those protective activities. And then finally, do I need to continue being tested after receiving the vaccine? Yes, the testing recommendations remain the same. Again, a lot of that is because we're still learning how effective it is at preventing transmission. And we want to, we want to learn through, through just our normal testing process, if, if folks who've had the vaccine are actually getting, coming up positive. One other big set of questions we've gotten is how did we develop this vaccine so fast? And did they do it safely? Because it feels like it was, you know, it happened so fast. And the thing, big thing to know here is that none of the normal steps in the vaccine vetting process were skipped. They were able to start the manufacturing while the clinical trials were still underway, which is a big difference from normal clinical trials. So that was part of it. And then mRNA vaccines, which is the kind of vaccine this is, are just faster to produce. And of course, FDA and CDC were putting huge priority on the review and authorization of these vaccines. So that really sped things up. And there were some other reasons too, but none of those reasons are that, that safety was compromised. I'll be quick here, those are the county vaccination clinics we currently have. There's Valley Health Center Gilroy in the south part of the county, which has about 600 appointments a day. We have a vaccine website, SCCFreeVax.org, which is where we recommend everybody go to get their information on, on eligibility and also where they can book their appointment. We have information from each of the health providers about where you go to book your appointment. Information's available in multiple languages. Those are all the different sites in different languages, the short links for different languages. 211 is good for general COVID information. It's not yet a good source for vaccine appointments. We're trying to set up a phone tree there where it could route people, but it's not yet in place. But we do have a vaccine call center just for vaccine-related questions, the number's there. And then here are the phone numbers for each of the major providers. And it's a different phone number for our health system because that's where you would schedule your appointments. It's the Valley Connection Direct Line there, and then you see the other providers' lines. And then again, SCC Free Vax is a good, good place to go for general, for routing you to your, where to book an appointment. And I think that's all I had, sorry to go on and on. But I'm happy to answer questions or Christina and Jimmy, I'm sure can answer some too.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much, Brian. I really appreciate all the information. So what I'm going to do is go through the Q and the Q and A. I think most of them will probably be for you, but if it's something Gilroy specific, we'll send it Jimmy's way or if it's Morgan Hill, my way. So I'm just going to go up to the top here. Given the recent announcement that Santa Clara County residents 65 and older have been authorized to receive the COVID-19 vaccine, why is it that Stanford Healthcare is providing vaccinations, but Sutter Health does not?
Yeah, that one is a, you mean providing them to 65 and older versus Sutter providing them to 75 and older, I think is the question. Yeah, and it is a, it's a decision by the individual provider. And it is based on their supply of vaccine and, and whether they think they can handle the appointment volume of a larger population. We have about, it depends on what data source you look at, but anywhere from 270 to 300,000 65 and older residents. We have about 140,000 healthcare workers. So, you know, 440,000 folks, if you open it up fully to 65 and older. And, and I think you saw the vaccine supply was about 183,000 first doses. So about less than half of that has, has come to us in terms of doses that would be for a person. So it's just a decision that the providers are making. I, I get the feeling that, you will, I should add too, that Pamp and Kaiser, because they get their, their allocations directly from the state, they make regional decisions. And so it, I actually don't know what they're doing, what Sutter's doing in other counties, but it, you know, they're factoring in a broader set of, of needs than just our county. But that's the reason, it's really a provider, and the state has given discretion to that, the provider level, which surprised us a little, that was a few weeks back too. But yeah, that's, that's what's happening, okay?
Yeah, the questioner did clarify that Sutter, they actually meant Palo Alto Medical Foundation, but I think the answer remains the same there. The next question is seeing the data on long-term convalescent LTCF, so long-term convalescent facilities on deaths there, why has the county not focused more restriction testing and containing efforts around LTCF patients and staff?
We, well, the count, I mean, there has been a lot of focus on long-term care facilities. We have a special investigations unit that focuses exclusively on long-term care facilities. We do have quite a few of them in our county, about 660 or so long-term care facilities across the county, ranging from very small to very large. And that, that unit has been for many, many, many months for the, throughout the pandemic, ready to kind of spring into action anytime there's an outbreak. And an outbreak is really, I don't actually know the truly exact definition, but we treat, we essentially treat any one case in one of those facilities as an outbreak. And, and then what happens is testing begins immediately of every resident and staffer there. And they do repeat testing essentially every three days or so until no one new has tested positive for two rounds. One challenge I will highlight is that with the growing case counts and the, the number of outbreaks in, in, that have happened across the community these last couple of months, that's been harder and harder to stay on top of with our team and, and trying to, because another thing the team does is they go and check infection protocols. They do training for the staff there at long-term care facilities. We have had weekly calls with all of the long-term care facilities who want to participate throughout the pandemic, just trying to give advice, answer questions. So there's been a lot of effort put into those facilities. And as the vaccine has rolled out, we actually first prioritized staff at skilled nursing facilities. Our very first clinic that opened at the fairgrounds was exclusively focused on staff at skilled nursing facilities because we recognized that that is the most high-risk community. And actually how the infection is brought in, in the vast majority of cases, is by staff because we're talking about residents who are not leaving. So there's been a bunch of focus. I do, you know, with vaccination, well, the last thing I'll add is we've been trying to get our arms around exactly what and where CVS and Walgreens are doing their vaccinations at these, at each of these 600-plus facilities. And we've essentially determined that it's not moving quite fast enough. And so we've been trying to fill some of the gaps and we've launched a couple of mobile vaccination teams to go to some of these facilities to try to speed that up. And so that, there is, there is that kind of gap filling we're trying to do. But it is a very good point and it's an area of, of a lot of focus for us.
Thank you. The next question is related to the Gilroy Health Center, age 65 plus now eligible through county at Gilroy Health Center. So I think the question is over at Valley Medical in Gilroy, can you be in that 65 to 74 range? Or is that facility just 75 and up?
No, it's anyone 65 and older as of yesterday. So anyone who, the one caveat, and it's been a really tricky issue for a lot of reasons, but we, our county health system can vaccinate anyone who isn't a, who is a county resident or a, or gets their primary care through the county system. So you could work, live in Hollister, but you get your primary care through the Gilroy Clinic, then, then it would still be, that's your primary care provider, so it would still be reasonable to get your vaccine there. But the only, the other exception to that is if you're a Stan, if you're a Kaiser patient or a Pamp patient, because those two health systems get their own allocation of vaccine that is supposed to be for their patients directly from the state. And so we are not able at this time to vaccinate members of those or patients of those two systems. But everyone else, if they want to go to the Gilroy Clinic to get vaccinated, who's over 65 and a county resident, they're more than welcome to do that. And they can, you know, that phone number that's in the slide deck, 970-2000, or the SCCFreeVax.org website can get you an appointment. I believe there's, I haven't checked today, actually. I, you know, checking a couple of days ago before we went to 65 plus, there were quite a few appointments available. But I would check that site frequently because what we found is they actually, sometimes appointments get canceled. Someone real, you know, for a variety of reasons and they can repopulate throughout the week. We usually release appointments on Fridays, but they, throughout the week, it can go from being booked to actually having openings. So I would keep checking that site.
So one of the questions was Kaiser patients 65 and up, can they schedule appointments on the county site? And the answer to that is no, if you're part of Kaiser or Pamp, you have to call their Kaiser or Pamp to get your vaccination. Also, along the same lines of ages, there's a question, any idea when Kaiser will vaccinate 65 plus? Are they done with healthcare workers in 75 plus? On this question, I just heard from somebody today that had an appointment booked with Kaiser that's 75 plus and they canceled it due to the limited supply. Anything else there to point out, Brian?
No, yeah, we had heard that too. We, so it's a, it's a real problem. Yeah, I'd heard that the few appointments had been canceled. They, they actually, Kaiser actually started vaccinating 65 and older, or at least booking appointments with 65 and older, right when the state made their announcement that they were allowing health providers to choose whether to do that. So they started down that road and then they changed their mind, I think, once they realized that the volume of demand. And so they, they switched to 75 and older, but it's really hard to say when they'll go back. It is a decision based on their supply. And, and that is one again, because it's regionally, like they're getting these allocations from the state. And then they're deciding what, where to get, you know, where within their very big statewide system to, to allocate it. So it's a, it's tricky to predict what they're thinking.
Okay, you mentioned extra credit related to high test rates, what does that mean?
Yeah, so, so the, the way the state built their, their measure, their four-colored tier system, the, the purple tier, the red tier, the orange tier, the yellow tier, where they're saying how dangerous it is in your community, essentially. tier system, the, the purple tier, the red tier, the orange tier, the yellow tier, where they're saying how dangerous it is in your community, essentially. They, the two main metrics they look at are case rates and positivity rates. But they give you credit on your case rate if you're testing more, because they're essentially acknowledging that if you test very little, you will find very few cases. But if you test a lot more, you're going to find a lot of cases. And so they didn't want to punish anyone or discourage anyone from doing a lot of testing, which is very beneficial for the health officers to understand what's happening in the pandemic and for anyone to know their status, so they, they can take appropriate action and isolate and protect their family. So they didn't want to discourage testing at all and they really wanted to encourage it. So they give you, they, they reduce your case rate based on how much testing you're doing to try to reflect more accurately how prevalent the virus might be. So there's a formula they use, and if you do more testing, the case rate comes down. I mentioned our adjusted case rate's about 23, 23 cases per 100,000. And to get out of the purple tier, we need to get that down to seven, under seven. But if we didn't have the testing we have, the unadjusted case rate is like, I think it's 46 or 45 cases. So it, it, it's almost been cut in half based on how much testing we do.
What is the cost of the vaccine at Valley Medical Center in Gilroy, or anywhere else for that matter?
It is free. I should have brought that up, thank you for the question. It is covered by the federal government, there is no cost for anyone, no cost for the patient. There's no, yeah, you will not be charged for getting the vaccine.
Great, thank you. A question that we have, you state that you should get tested even after getting vaccinated, but doesn't the vaccine have elements of the virus?
So the way that, very good question again, the way the, the vaccine works, it's actually a different technology than many vaccines. This mRNA technology, many vaccines do have elements of either dead virus or in small amounts of live virus that is injected in, in order for your body to recognize it and then develop the antibodies to fight it off. So that when more of, of a real virus gets in, you would be ready for it. But this, this is actually a different approach. The mRNA vaccine is essentially instructions that get injected into your body. They, they tell your body how to produce the exact same kind of protein that's in, the most dangerous kind of protein that's in COVID-19. So your body produces that on its own. So it is not the virus itself, but it is identical protein to that, that harmful part of COVID-19. And then your body's immune system recognizes that protein and knows what, and you know, takes care of it right then, or quick learns how to take care of it. And then if the real virus ever gets in your body, you will be ready to fight it off. So there isn't, because there's no part of the real COVID-19 virus that's injected in you, there's no risk of testing positive. For example, if you were to go get tested, you might actually test positive on an antibody test. That is a possibility, but you wouldn't test positive on a COVID-19 PCR test, those diagnostic tests with the swab. And you know, the common tests that everyone gets.
Thank you, Brian. We have someone from the county that is in the chat notifying us that there are lots of open appointments at the DHC Gilroy on February 9th.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, if you're in need of appointments, you can set those up. Next question, with what we know today with vaccine shortage issues, resource capabilities, et cetera, what is the county's confidence rate that 85% herd immunity will be reached by August 1st?
I do think that's an ambitious goal. I think there's, there, it's really, it's really hard to predict, excuse me, because, because of the number of variables, I mean, the, the, we are very far behind at the moment in terms of how much supply of vaccine we're getting versus how much we would need to administer to, to get there. But we could have more, as I mentioned, we could have Johnson and Johnson come online in the spring. We could have big increases in terms of the supply from the federal government. There's obviously a big effort with a new federal administration to try to do everything possible to, to roll out this vaccine program as quickly and efficiently as we can. So there may be new ideas that come out of that. I, I would say it's, it is, that is a stretch goal, but I don't, we are, we are trying to get there. But I think it would be, it's hard to predict a percentage of confidence, but I, there are a lot of unknowns. It's like the theme of COVID is just uncertainty, but we're charging ahead to try to get there.
If you have an appointment for a second dose, can you guarantee that a vaccine will be available?
Yes, at this point, the, the way that the, the allocations have happened, they actually are giving out second doses. And they're saying, they're marking them as second doses. And so, and we, there was talk actually of them maybe just the, the allocation changing and the consolidating into one bucket. But even if that happened, the county and other providers, certainly the county is, would be carving out second doses and making sure they're, they're ready. But, but right now it's even clearer than that. It's, we have this, we essentially have a dose waiting for anyone for their second, their second dose. There was a, and we hear rumors every once in a while that, oh, they were, they're running out. That isn't the case. We're, we're much more worried about keeping up with the first dose side of things and meeting the demand in the populations that we, that are eligible or that are, you know, we want to be, we want to make eligible as the state allows in the future. So no, long answer, but.
And then along the same lines, if for your second dose, does it have to be the same manufacturer as the first dose?
Yes, it should be. It definitely should be the same manufacturer, very, very, it is important to try to make that happen. The CDC just in the last couple of days came out with some guidance that I, I do need to read more closely. That actually says it's not as big a deal if, if, if it happens. You know, we, we're not that worried about it. So it's, it, it's worth report, I think they ask you to report it if it happens. And then they're trying to track, you know, any kind of issues that might arise from, from that. But these vaccines are quite similar. They're the same technology that is used and you could see from the trials, they performed awfully similarly. So I think it's, there's more to learn on that, but right now it's a strong recommendation just to make sure that, and everyone gets a vaccination card when they get their first dose. And then more, you know, they write on it both when you're supposed to return and what vaccine you got. So important to keep that card, important to bring it back to your second appointment and make sure that you get that, that's, and that same dosage. And it's also good to go back to the same place you were at, because they're going to have the same vaccine in most cases.
Okay, for fragile seniors living in rental housing such as apartments, can we get a mobile clinic to them? We have several communities in the South County.
That's, yeah, that's a great question. We, this is a, we do not have a great solution for that question right now. We, for homebound seniors and, and others, the, you know, the, anyone who's got an in-home supportive care, caregiver, or you know, a home, home caregiver, that, that, that caregiver is eligible to, you know, if you're an IHSS worker or family member even who's taking care of someone with one of, with, with severe disabilities, those folks are eligible under Phase 1A. So they can come in and get their vaccine. But if you are, are someone who, you know, is 75 or older and, and really can't get out and you're living in an individual setting, we're still in the phase where we're trying to patch through all those long-term care facilities. And there's so many of them. We're stratifying our, our mobile teams by risk. So we started with the skilled nursing facilities to try to fill in any, any gaps from CVS and Walgreens. And now we're kind of moving, moving along to the next highest risk, like memory care units and, and larger facilities with, with some more vulnerable populations. So I, we hope down the road, we might be able to do that. But at this point, individual residences are, that, that will, we're not quite, we don't have a resource. And so we really encourage folks to assist their family members and, and trying to get them to a vaccination clinic. Or if it, or if you're, you know, you're not someone who gets out much and you, and you're, and it's a low risk situation, you may want to wait until there's more resources to try to get the vaccine to you.
Brian, it's almost 6:30. And so I, we do have some more questions out here. And so what can we offer? One is if you share the PowerPoint with, with me, I will share it also with Gilroy. And then we can put it on our websites and so people can go there and see it on our COVID pages. If there are general questions that didn't get asked tonight, what's the best way for our community members to ask questions of the county?
Well, if they're vaccine related questions, that, we have our vaccine call center, which is a pretty good resource. That's, that phone number is similar to the Valley Connections phone number for scheduling appointments. And actually they do a little bit of scheduling appointments at just one of our sites, but they're also there to answer questions. And that number is 408-970-2999. The Valley Connection, the scheduling one is 408-970-2000. So both of those, depending on what you're trying to do, are, are useful resources. And then, I don't know, do, I can stay on for a little longer, although I know everyone's time is stretched. So if there were questions you wanted to get to tonight, that's, that's fine too. I'm trying to think what, what else. We have a lot of information on our website. And if there, you know, if it's questions that are more general to COVID, 2-1-1 sometimes can, can route you to the right place. If there are questions about business operations, like what's open and what the social distancing requirements are, we have a business call center. That's a separate phone number that I haven't memorized, but I could send that out if, if that's helpful. And then we, and, and the 2-1-1 line, we have, we actually have three different call centers here out of the EOC. So the third one is just for public questions. We have a vaccination call center, public questions call center and business call center. So those are all three pretty good resources, depending on your question.
Great, no, I, I think that's very helpful. So thank you, Brian. Thank you, Gilroy, for joining us this evening. We appreciate everyone being on. You know, if there's any other questions that the cities can answer, you know, feel free to reach out directly to the city of Morgan Hill or the city of Gilroy. We'd be happy to help get your questions answered. Thank you for joining us tonight and we'll hope to connect with you all soon. Thank you.